Race back to your seat because then we need a picture of all of you together. So just camp out over here on the right as you come up. The one resolution I'm going to read to you tonight, they're all worded very similarly. I'm going to read you the resolution for Miss Viviana Tesera. This resolution honoring the service and dedication of Viviana Tesera. Whereas Viviana Tesera has devoted 20 years of meaningful service to Rappahanna County Public Schools, serving as an instructional aide, an elementary Spanish elective teacher, and a compassionate advocate for multilingual students and families. And whereas Mrs. Tesera found her calling in supporting English language learners, bringing to her work not only professional skill, but the lived experience of immigration, resilience, and cultural pride that has deeply enriched her students' sense of belonging and possibility. And whereas having arrived in the United States from Argentina in 2000 with her family and just $50, Viviana's journey is one remarkable determination and success, becoming a U.S. citizen, building a life of service and impact, and using her voice to empower others. And whereas her unwavering dedication to Hispanic students and families has transformed lives across the RCPS community through academic supports, cultural advocacy, translation services, and personal outreach that extend well beyond the school walls. And whereas Viviana's strength and grace shown even more brightly in the face of her bout loss following the passing of her beloved daughter, Maury. Maury Tesera, a young gifted woman who at 20 years old was studying international policy and politics at George Mason University and who was posthumously awarded her degree in 2023 in recognition of her promise and perseverance. And now therefore be it resolved that Rappahanna County School Board honors Viviana Tesera for her two decades of exceptional service, her courageous compassionate leadership within our schools and community, and her enduring legacy of love, language, and learning. Be it further resolved that this resolution also celebrates the life and aspirations of Maury Tesera, whose light continues to inspire all who knew her and whose legacy lives on through the lives of her mother continues to uplift. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mrs. Tesera and entered into the official minutes of the Rappahanna County School Board dated this 13th day of May, 2025. And we will present this to you. We didn't hand out tissues for this event.
I can't pick it through these. One?
Each one of these has got a tone and special contributions noted. If I read them, we'd be here for a long time. And I don't have a here. This resolution, oh, we didn't make our motion. Is there a motion from the board to adopt these resolutions? Mr. Ruben says yes. There's a second from Ms. Bynum. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. And the motion carries. We are handing out resolutions. This one is to Mr. Dave Nazar, 23 years of dedicated service in this school system. Join us in the food wrap spot. Can you get us all?
I can, ready. Yeah, there we go. One, two, three, and one more. Great.
Robin Frye, 35 years. Ms. Robin Frye, 35 years. Jimmy Deal, is Jimmy Deal here? Jimmy Deal, I think he's been here since the school was built, right?
In different capacities.
There's Pearl Baron. There's Pearl Baron, 45 years. Congratulations. Gail Deal? 32 years, 32 years of service around that. Nana Dogen? 20 years of service, Nana.
She's very busy right now.
Yes, I don't think they will mind.
They won't mind? Grandbaby has just been born.
Grandbaby's just not.
Aptly named Noah during floodwater.
All right, we'll make sure those get delivered properly.
Thank you all so much for your service and being here. And we will not keep you because we know there's, you know, things going on. So don't feel obligated to let you guys stay. Oh, group photo. We gotta do that first.
Oh, group photo, sorry. Everyone, please come from the group photo and bring your resolution with you and just stand. Right? It's necessary. Just semi circle or something. Are we centered up? Okay. We should come over.
That's good for me. All right, one, two, three.
All right, thank you all.
So much institutional knowledge.
Gail, tell Jimmy how to come back tomorrow. Now give him a hand. Okay, good. That's a good accomplishment, making people cry. At this time, our student liaison set is going to come and address the board.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board, teachers, staff, especially those who have just been recognized, friends, my family, and anyone else who may be in attendance. As stated, I'm going to be doing the school report for the month of mid-April to mid-May, starting with the recent happenings that we've had recently at school. In sports, we've had an amazing season so far with our spring sports. All the spring sports will be attending the regional championship on May 29, their respective championships. And Mason Comer, Cameron Reader, and Haley Vahey made the distinction of advancing to the state level for track and field in their respective events, which is, of course, a very great accomplishment. We are very proud of them. Currently, as it stands, varsity boys' baseball team has a record of eight to nine. JV baseball has a record of nine to seven. Varsity softball has a record of two to 13. JV softball is pretty much even, seven to seven. Varsity boys' soccer has a record of five to seven. Varsity girls' soccer has a record of two to 10. And our JV boys' soccer team has a record of eight to two. That is all that I have for sports. As of this moment, of course, there are supposed to be senior nights for many of the sports, but with the rain, the games are postponed and with them the senior nights. But those would have been happening tonight in recognition of the seniors who have been playing on the team for quite some time and their contributions to it. Now on from sports, we got to Leo Club. There's been a lot of things going on in Leo Club headed up, headed up by none other than President Emma Brown. Where is she? There she is. President Emma Brown has been heading up Leo Club for this past year. Many amazing things accomplished over this past year, including in this past month, the election effort of our new officers for next year. The president, the new president will be Nona Gray. The vice president will be Ann Rambolt. The secretary will be Lena Purnell. And the historian will be Gavin Reino. As I, as far as I know, those are respectively 11th grade, 10th grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade again. So sort of moving on to the next generation of Leo Club officers. As a aside, Leo Club also recently made cards for the teachers. I believe you guys part of Teacher Appreciation Week? Teachers I retire. Thank you. So they recently made cards for teachers I retire again in honor of their service and commitment to schools for all this time. That is all that I have for Leo Club. For NHS, there's a little bit more. On April 16, we had our NHS induction in which 20 new members were inducted into the Rappahannock County High School chapter of the National Honor Society. This is a great accomplishment, which shows their commitment to leadership, character, service, integrity, and many other qualities that deem them honorable and worthy to be in the National Honor Society. Each of the students had a GPA over 3.5, had showed exceptional, I guess, traits in leadership and community service, and also were of good academic standing in character. The elections for president and vice president for NHS for next year will be held at our next meeting on, actually, this Friday, May 16. And elections for the rest of the officers will be when the next school year passes in August. Also for Teacher Appreciation Week, our NHS members 3D printed small banner statues, which is what is on each of the little boxes right there. And they just did that as part of Teacher Appreciation Week and handed them out to each of the teachers on Friday. So that is a gift from them. Yes, awesome. Our SEA Student Council Association was also pretty busy this past month with, again, for Teacher Appreciation Week, held teacher selection on Friday, which was very well received and very much appreciated by all of the teachers here. From what I heard, they absolutely loved it. We love to help setting it up and participating in it. It was just overall a very great experience. That is all I have for SEA. For our POG profile graduate team, they've been a lot more busy than any of the things that I've mentioned up here. So I'm going to just pick this up while I read it off. Our career expo is the first thing that I have on this list, which is April 25, where 11th and 12th graders participated in a sort of job fair that was organized by a profile of the graduate team. There are about 20 different employers that met in the high school gym, willing to meet, had a meet and greet, learn about the students, learn about their aspirations, what field they want to go into. And there, and some of them were actually looking to hire high school students who are willing and able to work like part-time hours over the summer. For example, some of the companies that attended were Sperryville or Rappahannock County Fair and Restu, in Little Washington, the United States Air Force, I think the United States Army was also there, and many others. Many companies gave positive feedback to their students. And a few even said that they wanted to actually hire some of our students, which is a great accomplishment, which obviously great exposure, great networking opportunities for all the 11th and 12th graders. That is all that I have for the POG team, but I'm sure they're going to be a lot more busy with the end of the school year coming up and with our seniors graduating and going on to the next level of their post-secondary education or life. And as for other things that aren't in any of these above categories, I have the Digital Balance Challenge, which was headed up by Mrs. Hederick, Mr. Gates, and Mrs. Driggers. This was held from, I believe, March 16 to May 2, and that has now officially ended. It aims to help students reduce their screen time using incentives and week-in-fund interactive weekly check-ins. With the top five students with the biggest overall percentage of screen time reduction winning a $100 Amazon gift card. Students who reduce their screen time by 10% overall are going to be invited to a catered luncheon at a time that has yet to be determined. And the flex class, our seminar class with the highest overall screen time reduction won a catered breakfast as well. That was Mr. Stevenson's flex class, his Friday and Monday flex class. So congratulations to them and to everyone who won the gift cards and will be participating at the luncheon for reducing their screen time habits and, I guess, pushing more healthy behavioral habits overall. That is all that I have for the Digital Balance Challenge. Up next was our Prom 2025, which was held on April 26 at High Meadow Manor. The theme was Once Upon a Dream, so in essence, sort of Cinderella vibes, if that's, if you know what I mean. And everybody loved it. It had a very positive response overall. Everybody that I talked to, I went myself, everybody know, everybody though that I talked with, they absolutely loved it. It was amazing. The location was amazing. I'm sure you all know. The music, food, it was all more than exceptional. And everybody was, I cannot say this enough, people loved it. And hopefully, I'm looking forward to something similar next year. And honestly, Once Upon a Dream, Cinderella, I think I can say it was considered a bit of a magical night to everybody that was there. Off with Prom and off to the next thing, a newly introduced item called our Security Pass. And Dr. Boynton, please correct me if I'm wrong. I'm just trying to consolidate what are, what are down based off what we have had recently. It is a new hall pass system that has been rolled out within the last one to two weeks. And it's a virtual hall pass system rather than having newspaper passes all the time, but to sort of save on paper waste and also to streamline efficiency. It aims to have, like I said, a more streamlined system of using hall passes so that student's location is known at all times. Because with the paper passes, it's kind of hard to track where a student is at any given time. Like they might go to the POG room to ask about scholarship advice. And the POG room might send them to Miss Pond to ask about their transcripts or their GPA. And although their pass minute said that they were at the POG room, now they're at Miss Pond's office. And someone calls the POG room like, hey, we're so-and-so. And they're like, oh, they're not here. And that can cause a bit of discomfort and a little bit of confusion. So with the Security Pass, that is able to be tracked online and updated accordingly, which was, sorry, which has, which has admittedly received some mixed feedback from students, but I believe that it is all, that is because we're just getting used to it. It's a little hard to navigate sometimes. Other times, it's amazing. But that is what we have been using so far. And I believe, is that going to be used next year? It is going to be used next year. Hopefully, we'll be a lot more acclimated to it by then. And that is all that I have for the recent happenings, which was a lot. So without further ado, I'm going to get on to the future activities, which, given that we're near the end of the school year, is kind of a lot. So first up, we have three days in a row, events three days in a row, our senior banquet, which will be on Saturday, May 17 at 5:00 p.m. to celebrate our graduating seniors, who will, as I said earlier, be moving on to the next phase of their post-secondary life, whether that be college, trade school, the military, or the workforce, or anything in between. That is the senior banquet to honor them and give them a sort of, I guess, one last send-off before graduation itself. Speaking of graduation, I'll mention that later. In between, we have our Baccalaureate Ceremony for the seniors, excuse me, which will be on Sunday, May 18 at 5:00 p.m. After that, on Monday, May 19 at 7:00 p.m. will be the distinguished student award ceremony, which I believe is for all students, not just seniors, to sort of, I guess, once again, celebrate the students who have had high accomplishments throughout the school year and who are ending the school year on a high note. And now that I said all that, graduation, the things we're all looking forward to, which will be on Friday, May 30 at 7:00 p.m. I don't think I really need to explain this much. It's our seniors who will be graduating and going on to the next phase of their post-secondary life, which I'm sorry if I repeated so many times, but it's maybe a good way to emphasize like what is going to be happening after high school. So that's going to be a wonderful send-off from then. And with that, that is all that I have. Do you all have any questions for me?
You know, I think, great, great job.
Thanks so much.
I did think.
She's amazing, very amazing.
Thank you.
And it was wonderful at the public hearing.
Thank you so much.
So many students participating in their civic duties and experiencing that, as painful as it might seem.
Sometimes it did feel a little bit tense, a little bit walking with actuals there. So I appreciate it.
It was great to see, and I think it was very good for the people and very good for the supervisors to hear from students. So if you talk to your peers, make sure they know it was appreciated, and they did really well. I could never have done that when I was your age. I couldn't. I would have been sick.
Very nice to hear. Thank you so much.
So anyway, very proud of you all, and you spoke very well, all of you.
Thank you so much.
Is there any other questions for?
Thank you so much.
All right, I'll get it home dry.
I'll try, thank you.
Careful.
Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from April 8? We have a motion, Ms. McCool, is there a second? Say, Mr. Ruben, is there a discussion? And the motion carries to adopt the minutes from our last meeting. Did just look at the bills. We are sitting just above 80%, where we should be at this point in the year. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion, Mr. Ruben, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bynum.
Same time.
Ms. Bynum, second, Ms. Bynum. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, oh, so. So order Dr. Crimsonley, 4.1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The instruction update is actually going to be delivered by Academic Services Coordinator, Karen Ellis. So if you'd like to come to the podium, the floor is yours. Lot going on at this time of year in the instructions.
Yes. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening to the board. I want to give you a little synopsis or summary of all the instructional things that have been occurring this year. Then I'm going to give you a little sneak peek on what's to come. So first, I'm going to let you know that testing is underway at both schools. At the elementary school, reading SOL tests were completed last week in grades three through seven. Math currently is this week. So we've had three grade levels tested at the elementary school. And then next week, we will do SOL test in civics, Virginia Studies, and grade five. So that will affect grade four, five, and seven for those courses. At the high school, we're going to, we started testing today. So reading went today. That would be grade eight reading and end-of-course reading. Tomorrow will be math, and then Thursday, science. So reading and math SOL test, I just wanted to let you know, I think I've mentioned this before, but they are new this year. So some of the scores are coming back a little slowly than usual. Or they're coming back, but just not as fast as usual. But they have to calibrate those after they get so many test scores in. There were new standards this year in math and reading, which prompted new reading tests. And I do want to note that our math teachers did not have a crosswalk here with their math like they normally do. So they went straight from old standards to new standards. And if you are a high school math teacher, you went from old standards last semester to new standards in a new test this semester. So lots of information that I'll share with you in the coming months, but just to let you know, you know, it's been a busy year. For literacy, I'm going to give you two updates, a literacy update and then a math update. So the Virginia Literacy Act was passed in 2022. The goal of that act is to enhance early literacy outcomes for students across the Commonwealth. There are lots of requirements and mandates with this act to use evidence-based literacy instruction grounded in the science of reading for students from K through eight. So this act is a K through eight, has an effect on K through eight. Last year, we submitted a division literacy plan for grades K through three, as we were required by VDOE. This year, we will be required to submit a division literacy plan for grades K through eight. And this will be presented to you at the June meeting. So I think it's due June 30, but I'll present it here June 10. This year was the first year of the implementation for grades K through three. But as I read you, a lot of the things that we put in place, you're going to hear a lot of K through five, K through eight. So we've already been forward-thinking. And we went ahead and pretty much met the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act this year. So not all divisions can say that, but we were pretty, like I said, a couple of years ago, we saw it coming down the pipe. And we also noted changes that we need to make. So a lot of these changes were already coming for us, and they just happened to coincide with the VLA. So this year, year one implementation, all K-5 students received high-quality core literacy instruction. We adopted bookworms from the VDOE list of approved core curriculum, which was a requirement. It had to come from the VDOE list curriculum. Teachers were trained in person during the summer, as well as completing asynchronous modules. We also had a coach visit, two days in the fall and two days in early spring. And she observed teachers using the curriculum. She met with them. She gave them feedback. All students in K-3 received supplemental instruction through Hegarty phonemic routines. I believe Ms. Wissinger and Ms. Todd did a little demo for you guys earlier this year. Students in grades K-3 were screened in the fall, winter, and spring using a new universal screener called the Virginia Literacy and Language Screener, or maybe it's Language and Literacy Screener, I can't remember. And that was required by VDOE. So pals went away, vows took its place. So that required a lot of training for those who administering it, because there are a lot of subtests. Based on this screener, a reading plan for any student identified as being high-risk in regards to reading deficits, received a reading plan individualized for their specific needs. And Lexia Core 5 and the Ignite program were used with students who needed that tier two or tier three support. In grades three through eight, we also use the Ames Web Screener. And that also is a screener that identifies students at risk. The screener measures oral reading fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary. Students in grade five this year use Lexia Core 5, Morphology Plus, and Ignite for interventions at the tier two and three level. And students in grades six through eight use Lexia PowerUp as a tier one supplement to their core curriculum, as well as interventions for students needing tier two and three support. And then finally, and students in grades six, seven that require tier three support, especially in the area of decoding and foundational skills, they receive that intervention using the Ignite program. So all that to say that you heard a lot more than just K through three. We were required K through three, but we were ahead of the game. And we went ahead and had most things implemented this year. Next year, you ask what's to come. So all school divisions in Virginia are to fully implement the Virginia Literacy Act for grades K through eight next year. While we've already implemented many of the requirements, such as adopting that high-quality core curriculum and supplemental and intervention curriculums, we also were required to now use the Vow screener in grades four through eight next year. So Ames Web will be used for a math screener, but not the reading part, because we're required to use vowels. This screener is still being developed, so we don't really know what that criteria looks like. We have lots of meetings with VDOE, and they keep saying, it's coming, it's coming. They have piloted it in many divisions, so I think they're just getting feedback and getting that final product. But we are told we'll get it midsummer. And then any training for any staff that's going to administer the vowels in any grade, they will need to be trained in August. We also need to create reading plans for any student in grades four through eight, so not just K through three, but all the way through eighth grade, for any student who's identified as high-risk on that screener. So a lot of work that has to go into this. We were fortunate to have all-in Virginia funds and VDOE funding that was left over from the lag grant to support our literacy efforts the past two years. This funding was used for staff training on the new core curriculum. It was used for training in the general knowledge of science of reading. It was also used for programs like those supplemental and intervention programs I just spoke about, Core 5, PowerUp, and Ignite. But unfortunately, the all-in funds are gone. They had to be spent by the end of this year. And VDOE has actually cut the number of lag-funded licenses that we have for Lexia from 169 to 50. So next year, we will have 50 seats provided by VDOE, but we did have 160 now. And the number of Ignite licenses, originally we had 120, and next year will be cut to 30. So these programs are vital to our literacy efforts. And we are required by VLA to offer supplemental and intervention services to our students using programs from their approved list, which is where we got Core 5 and PowerUp. So you can see it's kind of an unfunded mandate there. But I just wanted to give you the scope. So 169 seats down to 50. And then Ignite, we went from 120, we're down to 30 next year. The VLA also requires one reading specialist per 550 students in grades K-5 and one reading specialist per 1,100 students in grades six through eight. While this is a requirement under VLA, our current SOQ funds part of a reading specialist, .6 to be exact. So 60% of a person to be a reading specialist. We do have a reading specialist, but I'm just letting you know, we get .6 in funds. And then, wait for this, we get a whopping .05, 500ths of a person in SOQ funds for a reading specialist at the middle school level. So, but don't worry, we have a plan. We have a plan. VDOE is offering a five-year provisional license for any licensed teacher who completes a microcultural course. We do have a staff member who's currently enrolled in that course and will be assisting with middle school reading plans and services next year. That will allow for a five-year provisional. So that's reading in a nutshell. I can add way more, but I wanted to give you the nuts and bolts. Math, so you ask, what about math? That's almost as interesting. We are currently in the process of vetting several math curriculums for adoption in grades K-5 and then in grades 612. The K-5 Adoption Committee put forth math in U by Date Ideas Learning and Virginia Math by Kidham for public review. While the 612 Adoption Committee put forth Reveal Math by McGraw-Hill, MathSpace Virginia by MathSpace, and Illustrator Math by Edia Learning for public review. Public review opened on April 29, and we're going to leave it open through May 20. And anyone wanting to review any of these curriculums, the website, we've also sent out email and some other information. They just call me at the school board office and set up a time for that. So we're hoping that at the June 10 meeting, I'll be bringing you our final recommendations for math textbooks. Onto House Bill 2686. I just wanted to give you a little sneak peek. That bill was passed and signed by the governor a little over a month ago. And that And that instructs school divisions to develop and adopt a policy that sets forth the criteria for students in grades five through eight to be eligible to enroll in advanced or accelerated math and to set that policy division-wide. Good news there, too. So when I returned almost three years ago, we did not have an advanced curriculum math pathways. We used to, and I think COVID just kind of killed that. We were all just trying to survive at that time. So we revamped it, we have a math pathways. And there is options for advanced work in grades six, seven, and eight. And we have on and off ramps. So just if you're not, if a student's not ready in sixth grade, there's a ramp for them to be ready in seventh grade or even eighth grade. And there's also exit ramps. If a student's going too fast and we feel like we, you know, maybe they need to slow down in seventh grade, we have that option, too, or eighth grade. But now there is a House bill, there's a law that says that we have to adopt a policy. So I know we'll be working closely this summer with you all and getting policy for our division. Lots of other things coming down the pipe, too, but I think those are the big ones. There are also, under the House Bill 2686, there's going to be increased data collection requirements from each school division. So we will have different data collected. And it says that it should be posted on our website. We haven't seen what that looks like yet, but I'm sure they'll let us know. So as you can see, there's a lot going on with instruction. The last thing I wanted to say was, I've been in education for almost 25 years and I had never seen as many changes that are coming at us as fast as I have in the last 30 years. So it's a lot, it's a lot for teachers. It's a lot for administrators to keep track of. But the teachers are the ones that ultimately have to deliver this to the students directly. So I just want to give a big shout out to all our teachers. They are implementing new standards, getting new tests with very little direction compared to what we used to get. It comes faster than it used to. In June, I'll be sharing the Division Literacy Plan. And then forthcoming, we'll talk about the middle school math pathways and policy. All exciting stuff. Any questions for me?
Questions, anyone?
It's a lot.
It's a lot. It is. Yeah, like I said, in 25 years, I've never seen it come so fast.
Karen, what was the price point we were discussing? I've said, oh, we have all those slots that are open. So maybe I'll set a budget line and we can maybe ask for. So how much was that license per child?
For Ignite? $2,500. They get
Her child?
They get daily, one-on-one, 15-minute virtual tutoring with vetted tutors. These would be students that have foundational gaps in decoding that normally you would get in the primary grades. And I think COVID played a big piece of that, there's a lot of reasons for that. But $2,500. So when I first applied for the lag funding grant from VDOE, and I had to actually sign over, it was like $275,000. And it was funded through a grant, but it was put into what they call a class, a wallet, and then kind of like an Apple Wallet. And I remember signing that over thinking, that's a lot of money. So we had 121 licenses the first year. They cut us to 75 last year. This year, they cut us to 30. And our students have made great gains. But if I could just have 74 licenses this year like I did last year, we would be golden. Because all our, the eighth graders, we've pushed it down. Most of our seventh graders that need it and sixth and fifth, they're coming to the end of that program. And so eventually, we will close those gaps. And we can focus on getting the gaps closed before they even get to third grade. But it's kind of like we got the rug pulled out from under us. So we're scrambling there, just trying to figure out how to make all that work. Same with Lexia licenses, I mean, they're not as expensive. But you're talking 169 that were funded, and now we're down to 50. And we are required by VLA to offer that supplemental intervention from their list, and Lexia was one of them. And I like it a lot, it's just that we're losing most of our licenses that were funded. And so that becomes our budget.
What's the ballpark on those?
$42 a student, I believe.
Times 100? Times 100?
Times, well, we funded a few this year extra. So really times about 150.
But the other one is like 125K?
Is there something analogous that we can provide in-house to these things that are being cut, to these, these two programs?
Is there something comparable? So Ignite, yes, I mean, we have a reading specialist. We have teachers trained in decoding. So, but when you get to those higher levels, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and it's kind of turns over to English and literature and writing. And those teachers, they want to know how to help, and we are training them. But they didn't go to school to teach phonics and phonetic awareness. So they're trying, so we are doing a lot of training in-house. It's just that Ignite is a vetted program and it was dedicated 15 minutes every day. And the students really enjoy it. Yeah, I mean, we've had kids in the auditorium that had like a class reward for PTO. And I believe they all went to the aux gym. And Lauren Baron told me that they were going to miss their Ignite time. And I'd already told them that the fifth graders would miss. She said she had some of them visibly crying because they had to meet their tutor that day. So she brought them out of the party, out of the fundraiser reward, which I know is great, Lenny, but they actually wanted that 15 minutes. She brought them back to the building to do that and then took them back. So that's how much that they, you know, those tutors do a lot to build relationships. And it's good to see, it's good to see those older kids break through those decoding mysteries that seem a mystery to them, and they have some kind of word attack skills. So it's an expensive program, but it's, we've got good data. We've made lots of progress.
Well, and I just want to give you kudos, too, to Karen Ellis and the, and the team and the principals and the specialists you've been working with. And it's because of that, that our teams are being considered for the All-In Virginia Distinguished Schools Award. And Lexia and Ignite representatives themselves actually offered up audio to tell about how amazing growth our children had. So that's, we hear when?
I'm not getting a day, I'm hoping by June 1st, but we'll see. I do, I'm going to participate in an Ignite Lunch and Learn tomorrow. It's via Zoom, but they invited me to participate. And one of the reasons, the Ignite rep said that she had no other school division in Virginia that committed the way we committed. Because we had to alter our schedule, we had to find that designated 15 minutes. And our attendance, they shoot for 75%. Our attendance is around 90%. So they invited me tomorrow to speak. So I'll put in a little plug that we need some seats and see if I get anything.
We need a discount. Like a huge discount. If we're going to be marketing for them, we'd want like 99% discount.
That's why I said yes, you never know what you'll get.
Karen, hey, also, thanks for getting up and speaking facts, by the way. Facts were necessary, and I really appreciate that it was very well timed and necessary. And I appreciate you doing that last week. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, 4.2 is just a very quick update about the summer programs that we have going on. And there are so many in Rappahanna County, I'm not covering those, but the ones that are just specific to the school. We do this each year. So of course, Spark Camp is again happening. Spark is our program for summer school, but also for enrichment and learning. That is happening at the Dates Below. It's providing Monday through Friday activities for children throughout the entire summer. So a lot of academic learning, collaboration going on, enrichment and field trips. So thank you so much to Jenny Capsa and Lacey Jenkins for all their work on organizing this and all their collaboration. It's been pretty amazing. New to that is the Glow Program. So Glow, Jenny Capsa had all these ideas about helping counselors build the leadership skills before they're fully ready to be the counselors at Spark Camp. And that we needed some type of a training program. So before you can Spark, you've got a Glow, she says. It's pretty cute. So the training program will take place. She had, I think, over 75 students who signed up to be either CITs or camp counselors. CITs being counselors in training. So for one week in June, they will go to Spark Camp to observe and help lead activities. And then the week of June 16 through 18, there'll be a counselor training program that will happen. And then a full day planned on June 20th. So they'll be going through different team-building activities, training, leadership, and to get them better prepared to be future full counselors and maybe even lead counselors when they get to the high school. Jenny is always a huge advocate that the Spark Camp isn't just for children, young children that need a place to go. But it's just as meaningful, if not more, for the older children who are involved in providing those opportunities. So really, really excited about that. Pathways Academy again happening. Where this is a great program where students are able to learn about life skills, all kinds, like unclogging a toilet or changing a tire, but also about future planning and goals and really discovering themselves as young adults about to enter the world. It's been a beautiful thing to witness and they're, especially at the Pathways Luncheon at the end. So we will definitely invite board members to come and see that if you're not on the list of people who are helping advise some of the students. I know sometimes board members are. So that program is again happening. And thanks to a whole lot of help from our friends at RAPC and PATH Foundation and other grants as well. Summer Quest is happening as well. That's the first two weeks of July. This is our gifted program, Summer Regional Governor's School for Middle School. So this program is really outstanding. It's a great two-week program where students who are GT can go, gifted and talented students, apply and get enrichment in different areas and get to explore, whether it's through general intellectual and general education classes or they're gifted in visual performing arts. So it's a, it has a theme every year and local teachers get together that really put together an outstanding program. I know our very own lady Bickers was a teacher here at Summer Quest every summer for a very long time. Had a child that has gone and it's been really awesome. So it's a fun program. And that's what I have for school summer programs. Any questions?
It's very exciting.
And summer nutrition programs is the last? Yeah, why didn't that show up? I have one more slide on there.
I can see it.
Can you see it? Okay, that was really important, actually, yes, thank you. Let me download this because it didn't save on my spreadsheet. So I'll have to click it here. Thank you for that, this is really important. There was one more. Okay, the sun, summer nutrition programs for kids. So because we are offering the Spark Camp the way we're, the way we are with summer school, we are able to offer our CES as a congregate meal site for, for the entire summer, Monday through Wednesday in June, where free breakfast and lunch will be offered onsite. They do have to come because it's a congregate meal site at no charge. And all students in summer school, summer programming, but any child who is 18 and under in the community, whether or not they are our CPS students. And that's part of what we are able to qualify for because of our community eligibility provision status. And so that's How many people signed up for something like that? We will see. We'll see, okay. Look for a note. But yes, so you are, you don't have to sign up, you can just come. Okay. Yes. But they need to know the time? Yes, and there, I think Holly sent out something about that, or is going to. She hasn't. And then Spark Camp Field Trip. So any child that's enrolled in Spark Camp and going on field trips, free breakfast and lunch will be provided through that summer feeding program as well. For students who are going offsite, they're allowed to bring it as a part of that program. And in June, Thursday and Friday, and then in July, every day, Monday through Friday. But we'll get, make sure parents have all the information about that. Any questions? That's good stuff.
Thanks.
It's busy in the summer, too.
All right, moving on, Headwaters Report.
Yes, I do have a Headwaters Report. Yes, this is, I didn't get a chance to meet a person, but we did communicate. And it's, it's a busy, there's a lot going on. One of the fun things that's happening, that happens every year, is at the end of, this is the 14th year of after-school, the end of after-school, we're all invited to come on Thursday, May 15th, from 3:00 to 5:30 to the playground for the end-of-school celebration with after-school. And there will be, there'll be food with the Lions Club is going to, I think they usually have hot dogs. And then there will be performances from the KMA kids and the Lion dancers. And there's also going to be a local magician doing magic right there, too. So it should be really fun. And, and then it'll be mid-July when after-school begins their moment again for the, for the fall. And you just spoke about Spark Camp, which is amazing. And that's, that's a big thing that Headwaters is a big part of. And then last month, there was a scholarship ceremony for seniors. And 18 students received scholarships, the total of almost $50,000. And Headwaters combined with the high school to add about $117,000, which has been awarded, and more will be coming closer to graduation. And then we also will have some alumni scholarships that have not been awarded yet. So that's a lot of what, a lot of good constructive funds spent on students.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Grove is, I know you've noticed he's absent, but don't feel sorry for this guy. He is doing a tour of Italy, not in Olive Garden like the rest of us. So, so do you have any updates from yesterday?
We do not.
Moving on, the VSBA Workforce Readiness Award. I just pulled that up. Just don't remember reading this this year yet. Can you speak to it?
Yes, I can. So each year, the VSBA invites school districts to submit some information about any areas of innovation and workforce readiness. So, and where we've seen excellence in students achieving. In the past, we have been awarded this twice. One for the profile of a graduate team and then once for Cat Waters' program, The Aftermath. So this year, we are going to submit another application that we would like you to vote on so that we can officially do it through VSBA. And that's going to be for a Pathways Academy.
Great. So that would be this action item?
Yes.
And this whole thing has to be completed before we submit it?
Yes, we'll take care of that. It needs a vote and then we can do something.
All right, thank you. The bank signed a resolution, should I read the resolution?
You don't have to read.
That's something for the team, I would imagine.
It is.
We're doing, where it speaks to who can sign checks and who has access to our accounts. And it's who you would expect. Are there any questions or comments about the bank's center resolution? We'll do on that later, too? No? All right. School Board Retreat. You know, it's that time of year where we decide by sending the emails about when you're not available. And I would say, if we could try to look at the time period between June 13th and 30th, and send me an email when you're not available, maybe? Or maybe when you are. I think last time, I was really struggling trying to find a time when all five of us could overlap six, seven. So anyway, send me some dates. The reason I chose the 13th is that way we can announce a date on the next school board meeting and still have three days' notice. But it's nice to get it done in June if we can. So let's target that and we'll talk about it. You'll be sending me emails and I'll be sending you emails back over the coming weeks. Let's try to figure out a date for a retreat. All right. And the budget discussion is the next thing on the agenda. Anything anybody wants to discuss? Have we not had enough discussion?
I feel like it's all discussed.
Shannon and Stacy? Shannon and Stacy and I attended a work session last night where we saw new models that were being presented as potential solutions to the closing the gap, and one of them made the gap even bigger between what we'd asked for and what was being proposed that we would receive. The most reasonable one, it looks to me, like is the one where there's a 250K deficit from what we asked for, but it seemed to be the one that got the most discussion and seemed to be the most reasonable. Ms. Comer compared it to laying down on the ice to distribute your weight more evenly so that you don't fall through the ice. Good picture to keep in mind. So she had a couple of alternatives that were discussed, which were plausible. They have a meeting tomorrow night at 7:00, and another one on Thursday. On Thursday, they'll be making a decision because they by law have to make a decision on the 15th of May, no, later than. So they may make one tomorrow night, they may make one Thursday night. That is where we stand. I don't know if you have any conversation, desire to talk about anymore. Any takeaways from last night?
You know, I feel like all of the dialogue that has been generated has been helpful to show where we stand as, you know, there are just consequences, as Gary Curry said last night, of our structure here and how, you know, the consequence of having a beautiful landscape and the things we love about Rappahannock. And, you know, we still have costs that go up, and we have, as you heard Karen Ellis say, all of these things we have to accomplish, and that does come at cost. And it's balancing those things and being sensitive to the community, which I think we've all heard that, too. We share those sentiments. So what I did really take away was that it sounds like there's a renewed interest and inspiration in trying to be really creative and innovative, to find other sources of revenue, and not always resort to taxation maybe, but find other ways that we can continue to figure this out. Because, you know, we've said this for many years, we're going to get to that point where we're as tight as we can probably get, and then it's, you know, it's going to be tough and costs go up. And, you know, so we've got to figure it out, and I have complete faith in this awesome community, and let's figure it out.
When I came on the board in 2000, and Rosa was already there, our budget was, I think, just under $7 million, around $7 million, just under it. And of course, this budget will be double that over 25 years. Where does it stop? Somebody said, "Where does this stop?" I'm like, "Well, you know, everything since 2000 costs a dramatic amount." A school bus is a good example, but take a car or anything you want to get, right?
Health insurance.
Health insurance, any number of things. So it's time for creative ideas and even some that might put a strain on wanting to live in a national park. So hard decisions to figure out how to survive. Anyway, I haven't been to so many meetings in one month, probably since I've been on the board.
Yep.
Since some of you have been at all of them, all of us, too. I recognize. So.
One more thing about that. So the county will decide on the bottom line for the budget, and that's the point where the school board has to come together and make some decisions about whatever that bottom line is. So there'll be.
A need for a work session?
Well, if you want, we can call a work session, or what's happened in the past, we have our June meeting, as long as you adopt by June 30, you're still fine. So we could bring you scenarios to vote on at the June meeting if you don't want another meeting.
It's a long time to wait. You know what? The problem is, the numbers are so dramatic that it's going to affect probably our hiring plan. And it's going to affect that. I tend to think we should get together before June the 10th. So would it be acceptable to meet on the 20th, the following Tuesday?
The 20th.
The 20th is the following, is next Tuesday, a week from tonight? Just to say, okay, here's what we have, and here's... I mean, is that plausible? Shannon, where are you on?
Yeah.
Nothing is easy.
What time do you want to go in?
6:30.
At the school board office.
At the school board office? Is that all right?
Is this a public meeting?
It'll be a public meeting.
Does it have time to give the announcement?
Yeah, three days. We'll be good. And it's almost, to me, that we better not wait. It just keeps the entire system hovering, and it's a dramatic number. So let's plan on doing it on the 20th, okay? And 6:30. Let me have here. Public comment. Does anybody would like to address the board this evening?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Steph Ritter from the Wakefield District, and I have several things. One is to say Shannon has done such an amazing job explaining the budget a bazillion times.
A bazillion times.
And why the costs are what they are. And I actually still think we should put pressure on the board of supervisors to fully fund the schools, that we should keep going to these meetings and asking for it because really, it is the most important thing in the county, and our taxes really are very low. I know that it's totally, it's a regressive tax system, but nevertheless, compared to other counties, what we pay per value of an acre is still really low. So then my next thing, ever the optimist, is that I do think we can get the Virginia Legislature to move. We just need to figure out what we want to concentrate on and who we want to talk to. And I thought the lobbyists made some progress, and that we need to build on that and figure out. So I say, keep that SIF team going, and maybe more of us will visit the various legislators. I'm still happy to go talk to Sam R. Sewell at any moment about why it is. And I think if we increase the taxes, that we have a better chance of getting money from the state. So I thought that might be also a selling point for the board of supervisors. Those are my random thoughts, and so hang in there, and let's keep going.
That's true. It would be good to tell Russell that we raised our taxes just for him.
Yeah.
It's his idea. Send your hate mail to Russell. I didn't say that. I'm not supposed to say that. It's out there now, isn't it, Luke?
That's your next tagline. You're so good for this.
Is there anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Betsy Deal, Wakefield District. I want to say thank you to not just Shannon, Dr. Grimsley, who I know has spent unbelievable amounts of hours, which to me is a travesty because she shouldn't have to be educating the adults in this community about why education is important and what the facts are. But clearly, that is something that we're going to have to do, and I also am an optimist. I think the showing at the school, at both hearings, both the public hearings, was unbelievable. I think the message finally is starting to get through, that there are people in this community who value this little school and what it does way beyond just what happens in the classroom. And I think that we need to keep the momentum going. I think there are a group of us who are committed, once we get through the next week or so, to roll up our sleeves and start to really look at not just sort of the surface numbers and information that we have, but really dig down. Because I don't think we've done as much as we can do to find a way to solve the funding problem in this school district. I also want to say thank you to the faculty and the staff who stood up. I haven't been to a huge number of meeting of public hearings in this district, but the ones I have been to, there has been nothing like the student participation, the alumni participation, and the faculty and staff. Angie Jenkins helped with the petition. Creighton Long spoke at the first public hearing. Andrea Candy Carroll, who is unbelievable in terms of her projection, got up at both public hearings. Michelle gathering her Ag Academy kids, and Karen setting some facts straight. It meant a lot to have you guys there. It's really important that the people who are here and know this school the best speak to the public, because it's very hard to turn around and say, no, they don't know what they're talking about. So I congratulate you all for doing what you did. I think the board needs to keep persevering and being there and being, you're the equivalent of what the board of supervisors is. You're all elected, you represent your districts, and it's important for you to be loud and roar at those meetings, because this is the way that we will get change to happen in this community. And it's clear that there's some things starting to bubble up, and that's great. I'm sorry that we didn't get, we aren't going to maybe make the full number, but there's another year coming up, and we're going to roll up our sleeves. So thank you all for what you did, and let's keep on keeping on.
Thank you, Betsy. Is there anyone else this evening? Scott.
I just wanted, Rosa Crocker, Wakefield District. I just wanted to be sure that you know that the public's got your back. And in case you have not seen these petitions here, as of this afternoon, and the number is still climbing, we have 423 individuals. And this is the printout. God bless Angie Jenkins for her hard work. And then here are the paper petitions that we've circulated, six people circulating. We kind of threw it together, honestly, but I hope you are encouraged by that. Yeah, and I echo what other speakers have said, that let's not get cynical and discouraged because for me, the small miracle is finally a conversation is being opened up. It has been a long time coming, so we have to keep showing up and stick with it.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? We're all public comment, the doubt. It's the month of May. March Madness has leaked into April and May. All right. Seeing no others. I entertain a motion that we adopt or approve of this V S B A Workforce Readiness Program for the Pathways Academy. We have a motion, Mr. Rubin, is there a second?
Second.
Second from this program. Any discussion? Go get them.
Go for it.
All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no. It's orders, there a motion to approve the Bank Center Resolution as presented. Missy, there a motion from Ms. McCool, is there a second? Second, Mr. Rubin, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. It's orders, is there any new business?
I just wanted to mention that this past month, I wanted to just thank R L E P and W A C P for getting an amazing, like 20-foot-high, 22-foot diameter.
Glow, that thing was gorgeous.
Planet Earth in the Oxjim. And each group, like it was called the Earth Dome, and it was for Earth Day, just to, what is our planet? You know, really amazing thing, and it was great because we didn't have quite enough to have each, it was cool because it was, well, I see one teacher who was there. It was a lot of fun, right? And but it was great because you could see the scope and size of our planet and just how special it is. It was, the presenter pitched it to preschoolers and all the way up to seventh graders. Each grade got their own presentation. The kindergartners were adorable, and then you could go inside of it and see. So it was just lovely, and every year, you know, as part of R L E P, I get to try to find something. I don't know if I'm going to be able to top that, but it's been really fun. And I also wanted to shout out to Ruth Cosette, who was the student who came to paint the maps that we have on our elementary school at the playground. She helped, helped with Headwaters' after-school. And it was at that time that I said, you know, when I was a school board rep, when I was in high school, what I did was I went to meetings and I spoke in front of big crowds about these things, because we had town meetings in New England, it's a town, things that everybody does know, everybody kind of like and rap. So she was just all over it and exceeded. I just wanted to say, like, she really ran with that, with that, since I can't be there, I'm going to be away. And she, I really appreciate and love seeing that spark of more students being ready to speak from their heart, and it makes a huge difference. And I feel like I was really lucky to have these chances to be in this community. And thanks for everybody who's participated in many ways.
That globe was like 20 feet in diameter?
Yeah, it was just a fan, it was this big fan, and in like 10 minutes, it was all the way.
My son has not seen it.
And the kids would just walk in, and they're like, oh, what? It was incredible. And it was satellite images, so you could see the topography, you could see the depth of the ocean.
So did me.
It was super amazing.
My son wants one for his birthday.
Yeah. I know. It fits just into like a little suitcase in the back of his car. It was mobile and production. They do a lot of cool things, and we'll find another way to school with them.
All right, is there any requests for future agenda items? The next regularly scheduled school board meeting is June the 10th in the same room at 6:30. Of course, we have our special meeting work session next Tuesday at 6:30 at school board office. We have a motion to go into closed session?
We move into closed session to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional and classified positions, resignation, retirement, and renewal, non-renewal of professional and classified positions, review the staff list for all positions for the 2025-2026 school year, and discussion of the superintendent's evaluation pursuant to Virginia Code Section
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. McCool, is there a second?
There is.
Second, Mr. Rubin, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. We're going to go into closed session. We're going to be in there for half an hour or so if you care to wait. And then we'll be back here and include whatever motions were required to get us to adjournment before the flesh.
Yeah.
All right? Which is everywhere. So if you want to hang out, but we'll be back in 30 minutes.